All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda presented, please say aye.
Aye.
In favor, thank you.
The Twitter group that we're from, Tanta.
I'm doing it actually. Probably trying to move this along too fast, can't handle it. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on the agendas that are not associated with public carry on this agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please press the volume or raise your Zoom hand if you are remotely after this in-person comments and then we will recognize. If you are attending remotely, you can state your name for the record and press star nine on your keypad to raise your hand again after in-person testimony. Anybody like for it?
Sir.
Stan Kenzie, for Tanta here. You're right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stan Kenzie. I live over in Harrison. And my wife and I have been here for the last seven years. We moved from Isidore, Washington. My wife is a military consultant and moved here from there. I want to mention that because my suggestions here have, that I'm just about to make, are observations. And I have no nefarious agenda or no political campaign for these suggestions. But throughout our seven years here, we have heard that there are plans to upgrade Bay Street. Since the theater building and the large condo building are the only upgraded buildings in many years. They, the vacant and recently torn down buildings signify a dying town to tourists that are coming to town. Like most cities, there is likely no money to go into the town to upgrades right now in the conference or a couple of pretty thin as far as the owners are concerned too. So anything that's done is not great, it has to be very expensive. Like most, let's face it, most people have no longer to flock malls, small towns or district malls. However, if you've been to Langley or say Paul's Bowl, Leavenworth, or even Solvang, California recently. What you will see is these are actually destination points and they're very busy and people are buying their goods and services and it's a great tax revenue. I suggest painting the thassas of the Bay Street buildings with a color combination city would get from the nautical themes of the Cape Cod. Bay Street architecture lends itself to the Cape Cod theme of white, light blue, light and different pairs of gray and dark trim. Buildings are already having an early Americana architecture that suits that motif. Our Tom Hall has just upgraded to a Cape Cod look and the rest of Bay Street could follow suit. And the proper color schemes along Bay Street would generate a nautical antique feeling benefiting our waterfront and mosquito fleet, creating a tourist attraction. Some say that this would be like putting makeup on a pig, covering the actual needs to repair and operate these buildings, and they would be correct. But painting with a Cape Cod theme now is the cheapest way to make sure that we don't lose revenue for now and then up in the future. And it would make it that our little nautical port a city destination. It would move us towards a serious renovations in revenue as revenue was sore, bringing the opportunity to update each building individually as needed. I suggest putting together a committee to study this and if the council is ready, has already done so, has not already done so. I would suggest a professionally administered strategic planning meeting that could be held and create a 20-year plan. Otherwise, the port will become as soulless as West Seattle has become, if you haven't seen that recently. And that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else who should speak?
Thank you.
Please first, that's the question.
Yeah, Jerry Cama?
Yes, please.
Yeah, my name is Rick Lawson. I'm a owner of a commercial rental property here in Fort Orchard. And I love Fort Orchard and it's such a quaint, fun little waterfront community like we all love Fort. And you have beautiful goals for having nice local services for our people. And the small businesses are creative, interesting, successful. But in the last few years, the city has people that I would call bureaucrats that are taking action and it's kind of killing those goals or those dreams that we have. So I want to describe the business experience that I've just had and I desperately need elected city council and the mayor to understand what's happening to little small businesses. So I owned an 85-yard-old building there in 1450 Centric for 20 years. It's just across from the new Starbucks over there. And the issue has arisen whenever one tenant moves out and another moves in from the office. It's a big terrible process with the city. I was annexed in 2013, so most of my experience been with the county and no problems, but with the city, it's very, very difficult. So recently, last October, Olympic Tree Service, which you might recognize, moved out. And in November, an athlete called Champion Massage rented the office space for me and applied for permits. On December 10th, he had requested the city to come in and inspect for a decent occupancy. And they did. Christine Sillella, the code person, came there and made a huge, huge stink over our building. And the reason why is we had replaced some six-foot-high dividers, which are like these normal office dividers, you know, some of that there.
Thank you.
He wanted more privacy and we replaced them with dividers that lowered the ceiling, so they're 18 inches higher. They were lightweight wood panels. They were non-load-bearing dividers, probably cost him about $400 to put them together. And also, we had a back door that had been kicked in, the interior door, kicked in by burglars in the interim and who had broken in. And he didn't need that back area, so we simply put a piece of drywall, $20 drywall, covered that up. When the code lady came, she was really upset that we didn't have permits, ask for permits, and we submitted them within a few days and sent drawings to her. But the problem is that the building people required this to be drawn by an architect. That cost me $2,000 to pay an architect and took two months to get the drawings, although very, very simple. And as of today, four months later, we still don't have an occupancy permit. We have death threats from the code people not to go into the building at all. Her behavior was so rude that the cleaning lady that we had there won't come back and clean, she's afraid of the city. So now, after this four-month delay, it's cost me over $10,000 plus the $2,000 of the architect for no reasonable reason. There's no structural issue, there's no fire issue, there's no safety issue, there's nothing. We wanted to remove the panels. It only takes two hours to take them out. But we were seriously threatened not to take the panels out. And we have repetitive threats from the code lady for $250 a day fines. On top of that, the city person is commanding his staff to use the small office in the back because there's a couple of stairs to go up to it. And so it's not ADA compliant for that little back office. Then there's six entrances to the building, Mark. So my tenant now wants to abandon Fort Orchard as this ridiculous behavior has never occurred in his businesses, which he has in Renton Landwood. And the result is it'll be one less service for the citizen of Fort Orchard. And for me, with no income or anything, the building and grounds will turn into a dump site filled with homeless transits. Total obstruction of the goals that you and I love. So councilperson's high lieutenant, Eric Warden, have toured the property and they'll tell you about it. Please, I beg you all to come see this property and then discuss with the city people their attitudes and maybe their policies on dealing when one tenant moves out and another tenant moves in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in person, please start forward. Seeing none, can we go to the online attendance and see if there's anybody? I'm not able to tell because my computer is not prepared.
Can you hear me? Good evening, council. My name is Greg Crabby. I'm here this evening on behalf of McCormick Communities. Excuse me. Tonight, we have another final plat on your consent agenda. And again, I just want to thank staff for all their hard work in pulling all the necessary documents together so that this final plat could make it to the council this evening. Kind of a special thanks to Chris Hammer, who, as far as I can tell, up until just a few weeks, has been carrying virtually all of the engineering load in Public Works, which is kind of a segue into my next topic, which is to inform you all that you guys are understaffed, horribly understaffed. And so this evening, on behalf of McCormick Communities, we would like you guys to look at your staffing requirements. We think that you need more people in the building department, certainly, probably in engineering and probably in planning. Right now, we have two builders that will probably stop building in McCormick Woods because it's taking them so long to get building permits. Now, we are compiling data and we will show you over the last four years how the time period between application and receiving a building permit has tripled in the last year. And so we would ask you to look at this. We believe that staffing certainly is part of the problem. But also, it may be that systems need to be put in place to better support the folks that are working in that department. From my perspective, I'm in charge of all the entitlements for McCormick Woods. That's all of our grading permits and civil engineering plans for new plats. The last two applications I made for large plat developments have taken over a year to get permits for. I'm working on two more large plats to come in and I'm hoping that we can speed that process up now that some of the engineering staff has returned. But, you know, I need to get out there by March of April of next year. If it takes me another year to get those permits, I will be late and it just pushes us into the rainy season in the fall of '26. Now, I've talked to staff about this and they're concerned about, you know, adding additional people with, you know, with fears of recession and then possible layoffs. We believe that the housing shortage in Washington State and the Puget Sound area is so severe that even if there is a brief recession, that it will be brief. And I can tell you with 100% confidence that I, in McCormick, will not slow down. I mean, I have almost 2,000 or lots to develop, another community plan to develop. I've got a lift station, three bridges, a well to drill. I mean, those are the things that I know about. And I know that I'll be working with Nick Bond and Dennis. And it's very likely there will be additional utility improvements that I have to undertake. So we won't be slowing down, even if the economy does for a short period. So thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else online? Okay, with that, we move into consent attendance for motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor Protan, I motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Mayor, the motion approved by Cleveland Morrison, the second by Ted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we have a presentation. Fort Orchard Police Department, 2024 awards. Chief Matt Brown, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protan. And we appreciate you allowing us some time here to kind of show off under the team that we're going to make it today and talk about their accomplishments in 2024. The team that we have built over the last few years is one of the most amazing that I have ever had an opportunity to work with. They truly care about each other and this community. They're professionals and I'm absolutely honored to work with them. I would like to recognize not only the great work of our entire team, but also the exceptional work of some of our teammates. What they've done in this community and have the honor of calling and supporting. So the first one, for those of you that I call, if you wouldn't mind just coming up and standing with me, is Narcan Administration. And this award is bestowed upon those who successfully administer Narcan, which is in the lock zone for opioid overdoses. It's successfully administered without the need for other lifesaving measures. As we're all aware, the opioid overdoses are becoming a tragically routine occurrence in our community. In 2023 versus 2024, 2024 was an increase of 375% of just our administration, not counting overdoses that were managed by the fire department or by individuals themselves. So for those who are here tonight, please come out and join me when I call your name. Sergeant Don Mayn had three saves. Officer PJ Eubricks also had three saves. Sergeant Josh Porchley had two. Officer Noah Sanchez had two. Officer Nick Smith had two. Sergeant John Ireland, Sergeant Andy Walton, Officer Amy Allen, Officer Austin Culver, Officer Austin Potnet, Officer Robert Luke, Officer Mike Newley. Like I said, all of these represent lives saved and some of them multiple lives saved. Thank you. So lifesaving medal is awarded for an act of best to annual results in saving a human life. This year, your award was earned three times and it's a testament to the hard work and dedication from members of this department and our willingness to put a human life above our own. So as I read these, I'm going to ask you to please come up for those of you that are here. So on January 13th, Officer Amy Allen responded to an unconscious subject who was not breathing. On arrival, Officer Allen and Officer Sanchez located the male in the rear seat of a taxi. They quickly removed the subject from the seat, placed him on the ground, and Officer Allen began CPR while Officer Sanchez administered Narcan. Officer Allen continued CPR until relieved by the medic from South Kentucky Fire and Rescue. While the male ultimately passed because of his overdose, he was given the chance to have additional lifesaving measures because she acted quickly. One is tonight, but I think it's important to hear their stories as well. On June 30th, Officer Josiah Gaps responded to a call for service that involved an infant in distress who was no longer breathing. He was on scene within 30 seconds and immediately began lifesaving efforts. Medic from South Kentucky Fire and Rescue arrived a short time later and continued to use efforts. Officer Gaps is a service of the lead patrol investigator and no foul play was suspected. Unfortunately, the child passed away at the hospital, but his dedication allowed the family time to process and say their advice. As a testament to his empathy and compassion, Officer Gaps and others were invited by the family to a private memorial service street in Rowan. On August 4th, Officer Austin Potnet was on routine patrol when he observed a male standing on the blackjack bridge. Recognizing something about the behavior seemed off, he stopped and contacted the man. And his instincts were solid and he discovered the male was in crisis. The man shared that he was struggling with his transition from the military to the civilian world and intended to take his own life by jumping from the bridge. Before he was stopped by Officer Potnet, he'd already climbed upon the railing with the intent to jump, but did not commit it. Officer Potnet demonstrated care and compassion, was able to have the man step away from the railing, receive care. Before leaving the eight-car, the man thanked Officer Potnet, specifically stating, "You just saved my life." As I said, the value of efforts of these officers show compassion and a willingness to act quickly, size the lives of others. And therefore, these officers are qualified for the lifesaving ring. Again, thank you. I'm also honored to be able to give what's called a police chief's combination. This is a word that staff members who have displayed highly professional conduct or performance. And so Kathy Toma, she's an invaluable team member, demonstrates dedication, teamwork and positive impact when she serves in the administrative services division. She plays a key role in implementing and managing our new arm assessment, records management system, represents our agency in the county board recruit. She also manages inventory, equipment and ensures supplies are readily available for current new hires and as we have seen, we've had a lot of new hires. It's very important work that she does because they feel welcome when they come join our team. They're welcome as soon as they show up. She recently received a commendation from a member of the finance department for her efforts during the annual inventory audit. In the short time that I have been here, she has completely turned that program around for us where we know where pretty much everything is. And we track a lot of smaller things than the city does at large. What makes our team so special is that when we have people show up, we are ready to go for them. Their appointments are scheduled, their equipment is cleaned and ready to go. And so we had a new officer start issuing morning and it's fantastic. She said that. I'm going to read just one quote. Kathy sends humor and positive attitude that has made her enjoy work. She has the unique ability to lighten mood and bring smiles to the faces of her colleagues during challenging times, which there have been many. Her infectious laughter and friendly demeanor is truly a joy welcoming, enjoyable workplace. Not able to be here, but I want to read this as well. Austin is a newer officer. I give him a lot of credit. He was hired shortly after COVID and we had a lot of backups in waiting for the academy. He sat in our department for six months before he was able to go to training, but he got out of the academy, he's in off and running. So he poses every shift of determination, staying proactive and engaged, whether making traffic stops, contacting individuals or handling calls. Officer Potnet works hard without needing much correction. His commitment to excellence is evident in his willingness to come early, stay late and contribute tirelessly to the team. His continuously improving learning, setting a high standard for his peers and his work at ethnic integrity and pride, making truly deserving of this recognition. In 2024, Officer Potnet had 53 arrests, nine of which were for DUI. That's half of the total for the entire department. And so I'm going to give just a couple of examples so that you guys can hear from what his peers are saying. Guys, he's never sitting still for very long than a few minutes. He's always actively contacting, finding, getting stops and arrests. An example will be in September when Officer Potnet stopped the vehicle and had just fled a compound with the Kentucky County Sheriff's Office was holding on to obtain a search warrant for a domestic violence suspect. And even as a young officer, his instincts were solid because the suspect was hiding in the trunk of that car. I also want to give him credit again as someone who continuously finds DUIs. He had three in two days and the first night was a two-per. He stopped apart for DUI and the suspect's wife stopped to find out why his, why her husband was stopped and she was also drunk. I can tell you from when I did used to work in the field, that is a lot to deal with and he does so very, very well. So his actions exemplify our mission, vision and values, not worthy of the chief's combination. Officer also exemplifies service, honor, integrity and work. She consistently goes above and beyond while resolving crimes and demonstrating kindness and empathy to those in need. Her ability to proactively identify suspects involved with all cases reflect her commitment to keeping this community safe. Her actions are not exceptions. They reflect the officer she has every day. She represents the very best in this profession. Her tireless dedication to justice and compassion has a lasting impact on this community. So I'll give you just a couple. Often times when we have hit runs, if they don't just dump the car and it's not stolen or they continue to flee, that can take a lot of time. We had a hit run recently and she located the car unoccupied and even though she had a marked car, she was able to hide around the corner until he comes back. And then not only that, she was able to chat with him long enough that he decided that he needed to come clean. So we appreciate that. And the other thing that I really appreciate about her, as I said before, is her empathy. So she recently contacted a member of our unhoused community who was outside of his broken-down vehicle with all his belongings scattered about, some private property. When she contacted him, she built some rapport and also with the store clerk who had called wanting the person removed. And found that he had no money, he needed water, he needed food for his dog. Instead of just moving this person on, she used her own funds to buy a large amount of water and gas so that he could go ahead and move on and hopefully find some services. These are just the normal for what she has and again, I'm very appreciative. Thank you. So we also have another award called the exceptional duty award. It is given for excellence in police work or outstanding performance of duties under unusual conditions. But it can also be awarded for outstanding performance over a prolonged period of time and for implementing exemplary problem-solving projects in cooperation with the community. So in 2024, our department and several others in our region provided a grant participating in what's called the Community Law Enforcement Aligning in Response to Substance Use Project. It's not as clear as just remember theirs. Sergeant Mayne volunteered, was voluntold, let our member. But she volunteered to participate with representatives from law, EMS, criminal label personnel, social service providers and those with lived experience. But this was a year-long project. This wasn't just things that she was doing on her duty time. It also involved her doing some things on her days off. And it was intended to develop regional solutions for those that are suffering from substance use disorders and then enhance positive outcomes for them. There's a recognition, at least from the legislature, that what works in King County may not work in Kitsap and may not work in Columbia. And so this work group designed a program concerning bags for personal health items, Narcan, and information on two local resource centers with the goal of reaching people where they are and providing an opportunity for them to seek help and ready. I don't know, do we still have any bags left? There are a few left. But we're seeing them on people that are walking our streets and they at least have the ability to make a phone call if they can and they have those resources. But there are also many more stories that are taking a more active role in the community with those who are suffering from substance use disorder. And the example that I'm going to give is a young woman named Chelsea. She's addicted to meth and long living on our streets. Sergeant Mayne was absolutely tenacious in trying to get her to treatment, but as we've already said, you need to be people where they are. And you need to basically wait until they are ready and be available and be there to provide them services. She also worked with Chelsea's family and eventually Chelsea's father reached out and said, "Hey, can you help me find her because I'm not seeing her in Fort Orchard anymore?" And Sergeant Mayne went above and beyond and eventually tracked her down to Everett where she was ready for treatment. She's been sober for six months. And what I find unique about this as well is that Sergeant Mayne has a story that goes behind this. And what do you call these, what do you call them?
There is a starfish story that I came across and it just fit the situation. I called Chelsea my wife a starfish. She's one that was worthy of saving. She was saving, so there's a long story that I did, but I'm sorry.
I'll do it real quick. Stories about a little girl on the beach and she's throwing starfish in the water. The boy comes up to her and says, "Why are you throwing the starfish back in the water? It's so that they may live." He says, "But look at all the starfish." This is her response, says, "At least I saved that one." One other additional story too. So she serves as a keynote speaker for a holiday event, Mission Creek Correction Center for Women. And this was the first ever event at the correction center that involved law enforcement. And as you can imagine, women that are incarcerated, not generally like to see us. But she was invited because of the work that she does in this community. And a quote from one of the speakers was, "It was cool to have our history come in and be vulnerable with us about our story." For some of us, we can relate. David Cheepawash, that accompanied her and told me that I had the honor and privilege of hearing the speech Sergeant Mayne presented that night. I was impressed by the vulnerability and heartfelt compassion it delivered. As yet another example, Sergeant Mayne's willingness to continually be with herself and a veteran of others, been in the profession for a long time. I can definitely say it's one of the most impactful speeches I've ever heard. Your actions save lives, so thank you. Professional Staff Member of the Year and a Commissioned Officer of the Year. So I'd like to bring Caroline over here. She's our professional staff for 2024. And our department, administrative services employees perform critical functions and keep our operations running smoothly and efficiently. These duties include engaging community members for business with the department, processing everything that is written down, whether it be on paper or digitally, including public records requests, processing property evidence related to criminal investigations. I could go on, but I've spoken for a while, so I'll just start with the things that they do. It's amazing. And Caroline has exemplified our mission, vision and values. With her exceptional work ethic and innovative problem-solving, shows a dedication to both this community and her colleagues. With her exceptional work ethic and innovative problem solving, shows a dedication to both this community and her colleagues. In 2024, she independently identified lead and took the initiative to begin the tedious task of digitizing all paper protection orders into the department's digital records management system. This improved efficiency by enabling officers to access critical records remotely rather than having to drive back to the office and do all the night supervision of professional staff. She's been an active participant in our public outreach efforts and attends community events such as our farmer's market, blue bash shop with the coffee. She's also had an immediate impact as a member of our social media team. Her creativity, enthusiasm have been a great addition to that group. She's been active in making important posts, raise public awareness and engagement. And receives two commendations in just the last two years for doing so. She's known for her positive attitude, willingness to go above and beyond. She manages telephone calls, emails, impersonating courtesies, professionalism in care, ensure that our operations and public interactions run smoothly. She's established herself in the last few years as highly dependable, knowledgeable, and respectful. Thank you. Officer Allen consistently demonstrates an absolutely unwavering commitment to our values and service, honor, integrity. And she's proven herself invaluable to our community in this environment. I'm going to give you two examples that were provided to us when she was nominated. Child abuse investigations are incredibly complicated. As our newer detectives can attest, that tends to be a lot of what they are required to manage. And not so much in control. I give a tremendous amount of credit to Officer Allen where she took upon a complex child abuse investigation, made sure that she was educated correctly, that she was following the correct path. She sought out mentors, took the full initiative in attending the forensic interview, conducted all the follow ups and ultimately led to an arrest. And again, these are incredibly complex and making sure that we do it right the first time, because that's the only time we get a crack at. She's also a dog lover and she recently worked with a member of the community that had four severely abused dogs and other agencies that tried to solve that problem, were not able to, but she was. She's also incredibly proactive. Even though we have limited time to do that, I appreciate that she finds the time. So last year she had sixty-eight total arrests, twenty-two was for felonies. She conducted a hundred and seven successful follow up investigations. But beyond her working capabilities, she stands out for her compassion and kindness, particularly towards individuals suffering from substance use disorders. We are catching a theme. She consistently offers support, resources, and even transportation and treatment facilities. And while many decline help, she continues to remain a partner with them until they are ready to go. Demonstrating a level of empathy and perseverance that really builds trust between this department and this community. I'm just going to give a couple of quotes. So I know she didn't enjoy standing up here. Teammates subscribe hours to go get her car working and helpful. I've seen her take community members to treatment and I've seen her how new and tenured officers follow her lead. That is a big deal too. Being a younger officer in this profession and having people who are not only your peers, but people who have been on for a while, sometimes to be a future sergeant. But that's, that's fantastic. For example, her performance style enhances the reputation of our department and inspires others to strive for excellence. Thank you. Thanks for allowing us some time. I'm going to ask you, if you guys want to come up briefly and we'll get a good tribute as well, how's it?
Chief, before we do that, I'd like to have people speak.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure. I just want to say for me, this is one of the most impactful presentations to deliver. You relate to the very amazing, powerful stories and it just hits home how good a police force can have for the city. It's amazing. Yes. And, and credit to yourself, you know. Early as all of that.
A little, come on. I want to say what a blessing it was just to sit here, all of us, and to listen to the stories. And man, I feel so proud. I'm going to tell everybody that our police officers here in Port Orchard are amazing. And I know how hard it is to be a police officer because my daughter's a police officer over in Palos Bo. And so I just appreciate every single one of you guys.
I echo some of those comments I brought to business in my day job. So we know it's the frontline people that really truly make a difference. Hearing those stories tonight truly moves me to know that what very different work we do up here is, is being lived out by the staff here in particular this department to, to, to hear these stories. That's not work I could do by any means. Talking to somebody off a bridge, to even think about somebody losing their child. I, I, I can't deal with that in any way, shape, or form. And you guys do that on a daily basis. Thank you. Thank you. To hear the stories, I've interacted with some of you, whether that's positively or negatively, but you know, to hear Officer Allen's story. Officer Allen is nationally wide and ran for, for city council. She, she responded to a fact at my business. It was nothing but professional and, and, and has had to come more than once to my business. And so you guys do amazing work day in and day out. You see our community members at their worst and you still show up every day. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. I am charged. Because everything's said, but I consider the police not only the protectors of the city, but also our ambassadors and social workers. And one thing that I appreciate is that you guys have done a lot of navigations, duties that something less is have a dedicated person to do. So I think you guys are tireless. And you, you are probably the best face the city has. So I would thank you all. I've been fortunate to actually have a ride along with. I don't know the title. It starts with Sergeant Maine. I carry you around with it. And it was, it was memorable and very impressive. She is fully into the deep end. She's going after, you know, it's like in her spare home, she'd go and like follow up on something. And I just remember being sort of tired by her energy. But it was an amazing experience.
Probably not as good as the camera you had, but we'll see. But you're going to have to say, I don't know, but you have to say something. Ready to go with this? There we go.
Next, now I have a couple of parents. Public hearing award is in school. Section twenty-one, two, my section twenty-one, four, my home. I've been forward to municipal code. I will call the public hearing board. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, please. Good evening, Mayor, Lieutenant, and City Council members. The South Kingsap School District has requested that the City of Port Orchard update the school impact fee to comply with the recently passed state law. The city has adopted school impact fees and administers the school impact fee program in accordance with an intermodal agreement between the district and the city. The current school impact fee schedule has been in place and has not changed since two thousand and eight. The primary adopt of these are as follows. Single family, thirteen hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-three cents. Multi-family, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. In two thousand and twenty-three, the state legislature passed a bill addressing housing that requires changes in the school impact fee rate structure and municipal code. Senate Bill Fifty-two Fifty-Eight includes a provision codified in R C W eighty-two zero-two zero-six zero-one that requires that impact fees reflect the proportionate impact of new housing units based on square footage, number of veterans, or trips generated. Hopkins Ave School District hired F C S group to prepare a technical memo outlining a recommended approach to scaling the existing impact fee rates based on housing type to one of the approved methods. The F C S memo recommends the use of the square footage approach and has recommended a new portage rate of fifty-six cents per square foot with a minimum and maximum fee. Under framework, the minimum fee would be five hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. And the maximum fee would be capped at two thousand and nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. As proposed, as the proposed school impact fee rate proposes to use the square footage approach rather than the per bedroom approach, utilize the park impact fees or generated used for traffic impact fees, the proposed ordinance adds a new definition for square footage to clarify the method of measuring square footage for the implementation of the school impact fee. The proposed ordinance also adds some language to Port Orchard Municipal Code, section twenty-one eight-two zero-seven-zero, requiring that the applicants apply the calculation of square footage along with veterans and trips with an application for development. The ordinance proposes that these cases adopted would take effect on July versus twenty twenty-five, consistent with the recently adopted parking impact fee ordinance. The city council reviewed this in its work study meeting on March eighteen and has requested the public hearing tonight to be scheduled and for a business item to appear on the next agenda. The recommendation is to open the hearing and take public testimony before it is agreed with the business hierarchy.
Okay. For that, I will open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak over here? Do you want to?
This is super random. I'm just curious, like what percentage of this school impact fees goes where concerning?
So this is not a normal interaction, but I'll just answer. I'm sorry. That's all right. So the, the school district gets to set these. We are just a pass through here. And so the thing, any impact fees collected inside the city limits go toward schools that are inside city limits.
Okay.
I appreciate your question though.
Seeing you go on, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have one on? I can tell you.
They have not raised their hand, but there are two citizens online.
Okay. All right. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Sorry. No, it's. So I'm a bit handicapped because I don't have a pack or my scissors aren't working. So I'm going to try this off my, my phone. But I think we can move on to business items. Business item seven A. Mr. Bond, this is you.
Yes. So this is the corresponding business item in the public hearing. It's just about school impact fee rates and amending the relevant sections of school impact fee code. And so the staff recommendation is to adopt an ordinance as presented, amending the school impact fees, amending section twenty-one eight-two zero-seven-zero of municipal code and section twenty-one eight-four zero-one-zero of municipal code as presented.
Mayor Kertan, I move to adopt an ordinance, amending school impact fees, amending section twenty-one eight-two point zero-seven-zero and section twenty-one eight-four point zero-one-zero Port Orchard Municipal Code as proposed.
Okay. A motion made by Councilor Rose Vip in second amendment of the motion. Um, any discussion?
Mayor Kertan, just a couple of points. One, and this would be the perfect time to bring those items up that we had a question on, but it's worth noting that in no way does the school district impact fees in many which way are enough to suffice to do what they need to do with the number of people moving in, kids moving in, and the requirements for our buildings that exist within the city for the schools to, to keep them and rest of it. So it's always been a question. I think Nick, you said two thousand and eight was the last time these were amended. And it's always kind of been a bone of contention. I wish they would do, take a giant leap, but it's something that eventually we'll, we'll come to a head within our, within our city limits. But it's a step in the right direction for this work.
Yeah, I'm just going to maybe add on to some of those comments that, that came from the question. Additionally, the, the school district has recommended a fifty-six cents per square foot in city limits. In county, because there are more schools in the county, they're recommending, I think it was eighty-four cents, if I recall right. I've called me in that, but it was in the eighties. I know that. For the schools, because there are more schools outside city limits than there are here. So as I indicated, we don't see that money. We just collect it on behalf of the school district and we distribute it right back out to some.
Good point. Any other discussion? Seeing none, it's called for a vote. All is in the air, stay right. All is the votes. Motion passes. Next agenda, I have this business item seven B and ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, section ten-one-two four-nine-oh and ten-one-two. Four-nine-oh, probably more pertaining to Saturday parking enforcement. Mr. Bond, this is you.
Yes, thank you. The city council has adopted parking regulations and restrictions, including time limits throughout the city to ensure the availability of public parking for public use. Those regulations are codified in Port Orchard Municipal Code, section ten-point-one-two. The city regulates parking on public roadways and public parking lots throughout the city. The city council authorized additional funding for parking enforcement earmarked for Saturday enforcement in key areas, including areas that serve downtown waterfront businesses and activities and waterfront park. Currently, city permits unrestricted parking in these areas on Saturdays, Sunday, and federal holidays. In order to empower the parking enforcement officers to enforce parking in these areas on Saturday, amendments to the applicable regulations for these areas are required to sections ten-point-one-two-two-nine-zero, ten-point-one-two-five-hundred, and ten-point-one-one-two. The impacted areas are depicted on a map supplied in the agenda packet and are city parking lots two, three, and four in certain portions of Bay Street, Frederick, Harrison, Prospect, Robert Geiger, and Sidney Avenue. Also included in the agenda packet, the general map identifying the city's parking lots by number. Again, only lots two, three, and four are impacted by the ordinance. Upon adoption, the ordinance, new signs would be installed to further notice this change for the public. Also upon passage, we intend to use in public outreach through social media and reach out to the business community to share news of this change. Staff recommendation is to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code sections ten-point-one-two-four-nine-zero, ten-point-one-two-four, number appears twice, ten-point-one-two-five-hundred necessary to implement the council direction for Saturday parking enforcement. Uh, thank you, Mayor Kertan. I move to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, sections ten dot twelve dot four-nine-zero and ten dot twelve dot five-hundred to authorize Saturday parking enforcement in certain areas of the city.
Second. Got a motion made by Councilor Chen. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Kertan. I just had a quick question because I just want to make sure that we call it out. Uh, in the packet, it said there's no fiscal impact. Um, I assume we're probably going to have to put up some different signs. So while we are budgeted for the legal portion of it, uh, let's not forget the signs and we're, we're going to get those home as well, I hope.
I think that the signs, I believe they're just changing the lettering on the signs and not re-energizing. And also those signs can be reused. So.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a big, I don't take this figure. I just wanted to make sure that we thought through that. So we're, we're letting people know that, hey, there's parking restrictions on, on, on at least.
And aren't they the same, um, that says two hour, four hour? And that one hour by the tractor. I mean, they're still the same as they already were up there. Isn't that correct?
Yes, yeah, we're just going to remove the Saturdays so that it'll just say Sunday and holidays down.
Exactly, at the bottom. Where does these, I'm, I'm sure we know that. Where exactly does that money go from the parking fees?
It says near the general fund.
Just the general fund, okay. Sorry, understood. But, you know, the audience might want to look through.
Any other discussion? I'm gonna call for the motion. All those in favor, um, in order to many Portage Municipal Code, section ten-point-one-two-point-four-nine-oh and ten-point-one-two-point-five-hundred pertaining to Saturday parking enforcement. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those? Motion passes. Okay, item seven C approval will be marched, eleven council regular meeting minutes. Uh, Mayor Kretan?
Uh, Mayor Kretan, uh, we approve the, um, minutes of March eleven as presented.
Second.
Then we have a motion for approval by Councilor Rosebuck and is seconded by Councilor Chenery. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there an abstention? I think I was up to this. Okay, motion passes. Round seventeen, approval of the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five city council work study meeting minutes. Motion for approval? Go ahead.
Mayor Kretan, I, a motion that we approve the work space session meeting minutes on, uh, March eighteenth as presented.
Okay.
Motion, uh, made by Councilor Moniston and seconded by Councilor Fenton. And, uh, seeing one abstention?
Obvious standing, yes.
All right, all those in favor of the March eighteenth, uh, approval of work study meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And one abstention? Okay, round seventeen, approval of the March twenty-five, twenty twenty-five city council regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve? I move approval of the March twenty-third meeting minutes. Okay. I count the real motion made by Councilor Bolling and seconded by Councilor Chenery. Uh, I think I'm, uh, I'm spinning, I was out, wasn't moved.
Yeah, so I will also abstain.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And two extensions. Okay, those meeting minutes passed. Um, and now we're going to a discussion item about Portage Portage碼code, chapter five-point-nine cabaret license. This motion.
Thank you, uh, council. Before you this evening for a discussion is a report, um, staff and myself have prepared. Uh, I circulated a memorandum today, um, just a few hours ago, so I understand you have not yet had time to review it. You'll know this memorandum was not marked to train client privilege. This is not confidential information. It's just the facts. Uh, and I'm gonna walk through those to facilitate any discussion that you'd like to have this evening. I also recall at our last meeting, there was interest in moving this to a work study for further discussion. So however the council wants to move this forward, if, if at all, that is entirely your purview, I will just give this report and then participate in any discussion as you request. So, um, the information requested by the city council pertains to the city's regulatory license known as the cabaret license. And as the deputy mayor noted, that is, the regulations are found in chapter five-point-two of the Portage Municipal Code. Uh, and so this is an, uh, an additional license that certain businesses are required to, uh, obtain because of aspects of their business. Uh, if they meet the definition of a cabaret, which absolutely the word cabaret is fairly antiquated. Uh, a lot of other cities in the state of Washington now utilize an entertainment business license or, um, that, that terms like that, entertainment and dancing, entertainment and music, uh, but they have a license similar to this. They just don't use that cabaret word. Some still do, uh, and they are one of them. Uh, I would note this code has not been touched since two thousand and five. That's probably why we haven't updated that terminology. Uh, but the cabaret license is again, an additional regulatory license that is, um, required for any business where it is, the business is open for service to the public, where guests, patrons, entertainers, or persons present are allowed to dance, sing, or perform music or live entertainment, including live comedy, uh, in connection with, so there must also be a restaurant business or a business directly selling or indirectly selling food and refreshments, including liquor. So there's multiple elements to that definition, but it involves a business selling food or liquor plus dancing, music, live entertainment like comedy. Uh, and so any business that fits that definition is required to get a general business license and then an enhanced cabaret license, which is an additional regulatory license. So, by way of general background and general education on business licensing, just very briefly, I can dive into this deeper if there's questions, but, um, in the state of Washington, we are, uh, empowered to regulate anyone, persons or businesses operating in our city who are conducting business within our city. We require that they obtain a general business license, and the rules pertaining to how you apply and the fees and the process are dictated to us through the model ordinance that was crafted through a combination of the legislature and A W C and, and a group of, of interested parties who, who put out this model business ordinance that all cities in Washington are obligated to adopt, which we did. Uh, so that model business ordinance applies to the general business license. We have power to adopt and enforce a general business license. And then in addition to that, we have the ability to also require an enhancement to that license in the form of a regulatory license. And these are licenses that are required of businesses that present unique, um, challenges or unique aspects that require additional enforcement activity or additional oversight. So larger cities, Tacoma, for example, has a list of eighty different types of businesses that require enhanced or regulatory licenses. Other agencies have far fewer, um, Portage being one of them. The cabaret license is one of the ones that we still have. Uh, these businesses tend, the businesses that trigger these additional regulatory licenses tend to be those that involve uh, interaction with the public in a significant, uh, way. Uh, you often think of them as involving, um, code enforcement issues or police issues. Adult entertainment is one of the ones that comes to mind, uh, but it's not all strictly adult entertainment. Uh, entertainment, uh, and dancing, as I mentioned before, which I've included in the materials, Tacoma's definition, which uh, at its heart is identical to ours. It's just a bit more expansive in its detail. Uh, but any business that has dancing in combination with the service of food or liquor triggers an, an entertainment and dancing license in the city of Tacoma, for example. And that's just one example that I pulled, but many, many cities in the, in the state require these enhancements for businesses that involve, are involved, the service of food and liquor plus that entertainment element. So with that framework in mind, we are authorized as the city to regulate general business licenses and then an additional regulatory enhancement license. The city has done so. I could not find the exact date we started. We're guessing maybe the eighties, uh, but this license has been in place for, for a very long time and was last touched, as I mentioned, in two thousand and five, when the regulations were updated, uh, to reflect, um, the, the approach that the city was taking at that time. Our license requires, is required of, as I mentioned, any business with that combination of food plus entertainment. And then the application, uh, the applicant is screened by your planning department, your fire department, uh, or, excuse me, our fire aspect of our planning department, the, um, police department, and the finance department to ensure that these businesses are current on all applicable federal and state laws. Then, I also included in the materials sort of a snapshot of how we have actually used this license over time. And I note that my, um, data goes back to two thousand and twenty, uh, because prior to two thousand and twenty, uh, the, the records at this point would have met their retention schedule, so they have been, uh, disposed in accordance with the core retention schedule. So the data that we've provided, um, indicates that this is a license that's used, um, by, uh, a handful of businesses in the city. Uh, we've had what ranges from, uh, ten, fifteen to ten to nine applications per year. We've been steady at nine for the past three years. And those applications, as I noted in the materials, are again reviewed by those departments I listed. Uh, and primarily they are, that, that extra level of review is offering the, um, in particular your building department, the opportunity to review the facilities, uh, which otherwise would not be reviewed on an annual basis. Um, so they are catching these code enforcement issues that, uh, may be identified, or these maintenance issues that may be identified. That's the primary use, um, for the license in recent memory. Again, all of those departments review it, so all of those departments have an opportunity to catch anything, um, as far as noncompliance with laws. We've had our first denial recently based on a non-remediated, um, uh, issue with an unpermitted installation of a heating element, which creates a life safety concern. But until this year, we have not had a denial. We were able to gain compliance and were issued those licenses, um, in accordance with, voluntary compliance by the, the property, or by the, excuse me, by the applicant. So that is a framework, uh, that we, or that is the framework that we utilized for, um, viewing the cabaret license. Again, cabaret being a very antiquated term, entertainment, dancing businesses, uh, that I offer this information to facilitate your discussion. Happy to answer any questions myself or get more information from staff if needed by the council. And, uh, I think this is a discussion item with the potential for any action that the council is looking to, to take on us, um, just to provide the mayor with direction of how you want staff to take that. So, thank you.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to, uh, remind council, uh, fellow council members that, uh, the mayor had sent us an email on the twelfth of February of this year, uh, talking about the, um, amount of time that staff spends on this approximate uh, time and some additional information. Uh, he also, uh, got the last sentence, and I'll just read it. Uh, my solution has had city attorney work with our building officials and review our current cabaret license process and report back to city council if any changes are recommended. So with the exception right now of the word cabaret, which you feel a little bit, the word is in Footloose territory in that city. Uh, you know, I, I'm not hearing any changes at this time that we recommend, and I, I, I think from my viewpoint, having read it and at least thought about every decent process changes, what we may want to recommend, and I think the overall, uh, intent of this by having building inspections along, uh, with the lack, you know, making sure all the licenses is, uh, is a prudent thing to do for the safety of citizens of Portage at this time. So I'm hoping to, you know, I feel, I want to discuss this at a work study. I'd be all, all for that if there's something concrete right now from a process standpoint. Right now, uh, whether, uh, I, I believe we had one, uh, individual recommend that we would eliminate this. I'm not. I think it serves a necessary function inside our city. Thank you.
Go ahead.
My understanding of H two hundred, the, the general business license portion is we're a code city and we are required to have, um, a model ordinance. So do all, all of the, um, required that we have an additional license. We're just a general business site.
So the model ordinance is just the general business, correct? So these regulatory enhancements are at the pleasure of each agency?
Okay, so we're not required to have?
Not at all.
Okay. Pretty cool. Can you discuss it further at, um, work study? I think yours to do that, it would be really helpful if we could get a list of all the applicants, if that's not confidential direction, um, for the years, just to find out who got those licenses. And maybe find out more about the one who didn't get it.
Okay.
And I understand that there's a lot of, there are a lot of people who are doing improvements without finding out what kind of improvement they should do.
Right.
And then when they find out that they didn't do it right, what they can angry. Uh, that happens a lot, and I sympathize with that, but that sounds like it might have been the one case that got turned down. But I don't, maybe we can find out more about the details on that one in the work study.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot more to that, that back and forth. So, yeah, absolutely.
I have your something?
Yeah, you kind of took some of my words. I was thinking it would be nice to have a list for us as being city council, maybe talk to those people and see how they feel about the cap, the extra cabaret. I'm looking on here that, um, the fees ranging from ninety dollars to two thousand four hundred.
That's Tacoma, not us. Oh, it's two hundred, just two hundred. Tacoma requires a twenty-four hundred dollar payment for certain businesses.
Yeah, and I remember that was the two hundred. And then it sounds like we already have the code in the general, and is it redundant for them to go ahead and do the cabaret on top of that? And then my other question is, what about like nonprofits that do an event? And then they have a comedy night? So how does that go under, um, you know, with, with the cabaret license?
So, uh, I'll start backwards. The last question is, that would be something that would be considered a special event potentially? There'd be other regulatory, um, uh, schema that would apply in that scenario. Um, and there are exemptions for nonprofits to certain aspects of the business code. Um, the second question was, oh, I'm sorry, you just said it.
I think the, oh, that, you know, we already have a code.
Oh, redundancy, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, this is not considered redundant because it's an enhancement. So essentially, the regulatory scheme is, or the regulatory framework, you have your general business license that applies to all businesses that operate within your city. And then the legislative body has said certain businesses present additional elements of their operation that require additional review. So you have that for, I think I listed a few, um, where you typically see that, but, uh, businesses that sell liquor are typically one of them, businesses that, um, uh, firework sales, massage parlors typically do anything with live entertainment and then adult entertainment. Those are the large categories. Uh, but any business, uh, you know, for example, in my experience, I've used the regulatory license, um, approach to, uh, bring additional oversight to a hookah bar. So businesses that present additional challenges, whether it's public safety or simply the, the structure of the room and the occupancy load, legislative bodies have decided they want to have an additional enhanced license in addition to the general business license so that you can bring in that oversight, because the, the, the business license oversight is very minimal. And we can only approve or disapprove based on what the model ordinance says. We don't have a lot of leeway to review aspects of the business that could create additional public safety, um, challenges. So there's no redundancy in the sense of this is not designed to replace this. This is an enhancement to that.
And you still have massage, massage parlors often have those. I, I, and I apologize, I don't know. What's up? They, they need a cabaret license?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
Those are the, sorry, those are the types of businesses that get the regulatory license. Yeah, so they would get an enhanced massage parlor license. But I apologize, I don't know if Portage requires that. That was, that was an example from Tacoma's lengthy list. Um, but you have your own list that this, the legislative body determined are types of businesses that trigger an enhanced license. The cabaret is just one type of enhanced license.
So, you have some? Yeah, I forgot, um, before you wrap up. Uh, so I have struggled with this one, right? Since hearing from our constituent that came in and, and, and brought this to our attention. I think your memorandum helped me this afternoon, uh, get to a point where I am today, seeing that, um, in, in, you know, the most we've ever had is fifteen applications in a year. Uh, and then since, since COVID, that, that's dwindled down to eight, ten, and, and nine for the last several years. It made me try to harken back to think of where I've, uh, experienced live entertainment within our city. And there just really aren't that many venues that offer it today, right? Uh, and then now looking and, and going through the process, because part of what we heard from the constituent was, uh, talking around the cumbersome of filling out the form and kind of looked at the form, and I didn't think it was all too cumbersome. And, uh, you know, for two hundred dollars, i- it's not super cost prohibitive for a business either. Um, I, I think at this point, I am not at a point where I'd like to, uh, uh, discuss it any further. Uh, we had one person out of nine, uh, give us negative feedback on it, and the others just continue to do it year in, year out. I think it's important for the city to have a policy to look at places that are going to draw larger crowds of people, uh, that, that may provide, uh, that, that may create an environment that has some safety concerns and that, uh, we can mitigate that by an extra set eyes looking at that annually. Um, I think I'm okay with that. So, um, it, it must something you gave to like, I think I'm just okay with what we have. Uh, even if it is called cabaret, because I think about, uh, that e- even just the term, how long, I would guess, uh, Ms. Archer, that this has been in effect long before the eighties. I would venture back to, probably we've had something in its effect since there were cabarets going on, uh, uh, back in the day. So, uh, you know, it just is the nature of that type of business.
I wouldn't mind listening to the other businesses. Maybe they just don't want to come up here and just see what that entails for them. Do, do they? I wouldn't mind listening to the other businesses. Maybe they just don't want to come up here and just see what that entails for them. Do, do they like it or not? Instead of, you know, we have our one constituent business that said that, but it would be nice, just as we as a body, to um talk to our business owners.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to talk to them, great. I'm just, I'm not in a habit of creating problems with the city.
It's not, it's not.
Just, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, fine. One question this second. Out of municipalities that you represent, are there any that don't have a license like this in their set of guidelines and rules?
Not that I'm aware of. All of them have something like this. Uh but again, it it depends on the needs of your city. So, yeah.
Okay. So that was my first question is, did we see any jurisdictions that didn't have this? And if they didn't, what was their mechanism to approve some archetypes of events? But so if we can possibly find one, I think that'd be great or two. That'd be nice. Um. So the other thing that, you know, I've learned about this, couldn't there be sort of an umbrella permit where you apply once and you're good for that year? Or is this?
Yeah, it's not prevent or anything.
It's not prevent, okay. Okay. Um and then the other thing I was always curious about, what conditions are we assigning um to those cabaret licenses? Because I'd like to uh, you know, we had somebody testify that a lot of what they're requiring do regarding more out of code. Um so they have to meet code and the conditions are somewhat together because of that. Um we know that there's life safety inspections that occur for these businesses. I don't know how often they occur, but presumably for the special event opens. Um so I'd like to know just a little bit more. I know it's only two hundred dollars, but it's also if there's a way to look at these a little more efficiently, then it's the staff reallocation of resources, which you have a positive impact.
Mayor, I have a disappointed order, um so we don't go down a rabbit hole. Uh I think the question was pretty good, it was still worth studying.
Yes, that was the next.
So I would say that it sounds like they have mixed um that that means they have to, the mayor, her time to ask.
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily, so you know, on that side of things, I think, I think that's the rule at that point of question. Um.
I'm sorry, let's, let's get a show of hands. Would you like to kind of just?
Yeah, I have a quick comment. Um I, I, it sounds like we clarified that this is an annual expense. It's not a voluntary dispensing, something. And um I know we only got one complaint, but all of them, one complaint may represent other people that hate speaking out of people's mouths. Um I don't think we can expect that two people have to come to the same note for the same day unless they will really organize. So when you say it's just one, it may be just one, but it may be more. Um I I'm just saying it was one that I've ever experienced.
Yeah, but I know it's very hard to imagine.
One that in my years that never happened.
All right, so let's see, show of hands. Would you like to take this from our study? Those three, I don't believe that if we use part of that procedure, that that would, it's not going worse than that. Thank you for your work and and time and go to the rest.
Absolutely. But I'd still like a list, please. A list.
All right, with that, we're on reports of the council committees. Um. Okay, um I'm just gonna go through those.
Uh we haven't had one since last week and next week's has been.
And you reported off.
No, yeah, yeah.
Uh utilities did uh council renovation was an update. We cannot talk about that during purely work.
Okay. Finance?
And into meeting next week.
Okay. Transportation, however, we cancel transportation um. Statute of the. Uh your next meeting here is April twenty-second, I believe. Uh we need next week. Housing tax advisory.
We were supposed to be here today, however, we did not carry a forum. And so we are working most likely next Friday.
Next Friday. Uh right now, it looks like the eighteenth.
Okay. Tour advisory, uh we need ten. And um who to stand in the corner? Outside the agency committees, um I'm not sure if anybody's got anything else outside of agency committee or.
I I have my N S files out for KIA, um I'm sure the mayor can tell us back to him because I think he actually attended.
Our house office account. We, we didn't put a report together yet.
No, but we'll get that, I'll explain.
I think it'd be helpful if we just, you know, I'll send my comments to Scott, you can, I'm a sky and you send it to uh um for any good dissemination. I'll get my feed you uh tomorrow.
Okay. Um there is no report from the mayor, except that he's probably here until he's honored with this. Um. How about the reporting of permanence, uh, Dr. Rob? Anything to report tonight, there?
I've spoken quite a bit today, so I'll spare you. Thank you for letting us have some time tonight.
That was wonderful. Brandon?
I do not have anything. Oh, I do have something to report. Um so this Thursday, six o'clock here in the chambers, we are having a candidates forum. Uh we have a couple council members are going to be speaking that are not up for um election that can kind of tell you what it's like uh to be a council member, should you be interested. As well, I think we have a member of the school district and possibly the fire district or court district that will also be here. Um and then the county elections division will be here and they will kind of guide you through uh what you need to do if you want to be an elected official. So Thursday night, six P M here in the council chambers.
Okay, we have the directors online. Ms. Wells, do we need to quorum that by the end of the morning?
No, because it should only be three council members uh attending. I will double check with uh the deputy city clerk to make sure that only three.
So. But if one.
You could be an audience. And just, just because my mind works the way that it does, um cabaret was a new name in two thousand and five. So originally in two thousand and one, it was called House Bank Social Cards Games Within the City Limits. So there you go, fun fact.
Yeah, much better.
So they overhauled that whole section in two thousand and five and that's why we have a cabaret today.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Eric Ryan is online.
Yes, he is.
Good evening, council members. Thank you. Uh just, we heard a little bit about some of our development projects tonight that are keeping us all busy, but I wanted to give a quick update on some of our capital projects. So uh this last week, we uh got some good news. Uh well eleven uh was officially stamped off by the engineer of record who did the design. Uh that same day, we received a conditional use uh permit from the Department of Health. So that is online and producing water for the city at about six hundred gallons per minute. Uh we'll soon go to seven fifty once some augmentation is done. And that number will nearly double when we uh uh finish the foster pilot project. And for a foster update, uh we are preparing to send in our draft mitigation plan to the Department of Ecology and then also uh corresponding with the local tribes uh for their partnership. Uh Marina Lift Station, we just hit the eighty percent completion mark. Uh if you've been down there recently, the green screen that's going to have a live vegetation around the generator is up. So you'll start to get a sense of what that's going to look like. Uh City Hall, uh you probably saw some activity out there, some concrete repairs happening. The solar panel is all installed and this Friday, uh there'll be some impacts to City Hall. And so we'll be doing some remote location. Uh City Hall will operate out of the um planning permit center. Um and that is so we can transfer power uh for the new services that will allow us to start capturing the solar energy and go back into the uh electrical grid. So that's a good news and that project is proceeding and nearing completion. And that about wraps it up for tonight. That's a lot, but I just want to give those updates. Thank you.
Uh then as I have one question, do you have any indication from ecology how long it might take for them to review? Foster pilot?
Uh our, our um wetland mitigation biologist, I'm sorry, our biologist for foster and then our um water rights attorney are optimistic. They say that we can possibly see some resolution by the end of the year.
All right.
I'd like to remind us, this is my eighth year, uh my first year I was on the utility committee and foster pilot was starting then as one of five cities and.
So your plan is once in a year.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know if the solar power system has a battery? Um so in in case of an outage, any production would still go to the system or would it be lost?
Uh I believe if if there was an outage, it's not going to be able to put back into the mainframe. Uh we'd be running off of junk.
Okay, okay. You're either full battery or you're down here. You can't have it. Okay, do you have any questions for the? Okay, Charlie, you get to post a loop.
I see. Thank you so much. Uh just to flag again, I know you're all monitoring the legislative activities, but my understanding is two that we've been monitoring are still alive. One being the um use of A I being a bargaining uh uh something that had a mandatory bargaining topic. And the bill is, on further glance, is uh very problematic because the definitions are so broad that they would include Google, for example, which now has an A I component. So uh the use of Google uh would become a mandatory bargaining uh element. So that would be interesting to see how that evolves. And then, as you're all aware, the property tax, uh increase the the state's permissive property tax to three percent is still alive. Not, it will change property tax that's still set by you, uh but it would give you that uh additional space uh that is still alive. So always happy to chat about the legislative activities uh anytime and uh, yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and we are now at our second citizen comment period. Uh and this is an opportunity for citizens to address the things on any items that were not associated with the public hearing on tonight's agenda. Um college will limit the three minutes. Anybody from the uh audience wish to speak? Here are none. There's one person online that their hand is not raised. Can we, let's go online, attempt to see if anyone would like to speak? The lights working now.
Don't mind it, we put it back in. The first one online has not raised their hand. And if they do, you remember it's star nine, starting to be a star.
Okay, uh now we're to go of your uh lab line. Um, okay.
Oh, we're going, okay, this coming Saturday is a farmers market, first day opening.
Yes.
Are you, did you guys? Chief, I just wanted to thank the people, sorry, your staff and again, time. Um and but it comes with part of that reward ceremony.
Jeff, gentlemen, I'm sorry, I'm trying to listen to council. My bad here.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Did you, can you hear that?
I got a little, yes.
For a long time. And 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 bringing us in and helping us become a little bit more aware of what your staff does for our citizens, for our cities, uh just tremendous inspiration. I really appreciate it. I know I chatted with you a little bit about trying to get so deeper involved in that, um but thank you very much for bringing it forward. Yeah, of course. And uh I I brought the ride along packets in everybody's box a week or two ago. I would strongly urge you to come out for ride along. Um you can accommodate that in the hour of today since we're here since four seven.
Yeah.
All right. Uh yeah, just thanks for everybody for uh uh reaching out uh with missing our last meeting. Uh uh those two now, my wife had multiple surgeries where they're out uh uh to a funeral uh back home at uh the mother. So uh she is still there, uh but is on the mend and doing well. Um I hope that we give word on Thursday returning home. Uh additionally, I also want to thank uh the chief, uh that is moving, right? Um sometimes it's hard to sit up here and go through some of the things that we do. Um we have to remember what hard looks like for others. Uh and 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 you and your staff do that hard work. So uh please take the opportunity to bring more of that to us, uh because sometimes we need that reminder. Um and we, I I really meant every word I said to 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 them, uh we appreciate it. I appreciate what they do every day.
Thank you. I remember I did chat with them briefly in the hallway and they were, uh I think one person, if you guys do something, goes back.
Yes, I also wanted to thank the, I was not kidding, it was by far the most impactful presentation I've seen. Uh I lost count, I'm glad I was getting to say it. Um so thank you for that. I appreciate it a lot. Um there's something else, so go ahead. All right. Um you've all know that next week is a work study and was this work study supposed to be our reach to semi-modified retreat? Um I believe it was.
Yes.
And in the past, we were supposed to give topics to the mayor. It's going to be on the agenda. Brandon, do you know if that's happening? Is there any agenda for next week?
Um not yet, but it's my understanding he will be back in town, I believe, tomorrow or the following day. And at that point, that's when he's going to probably reach out to um you guys and tell us that.
So, yeah, I guess just for your thoughts and send it to Brandon, uh probably Brandon, well, I have two topics also.
Yeah.
Thank you for the thirty minutes. Jake?
Yeah, a couple of things. Uh one is, I don't mean to rain on everybody's parade, but I will um chastise the department heads for not bringing good news often enough to us. Because uh vote uh tonight, which was extremely moving, Chief, uh Dennis, who I gave an opportunity several weeks ago to bring up all the good news happening with Marina Lift Station, well, well eleven. And all the good things that are happening in the city for D C B to uh and then I would ask you, please continue to bring those things forward. Um I would I I can't say enough, I worked with your police department when I was with the uh school district and every time I see Donna, it's always, thank you, Donna, thank you, thank you, thank you for all the help she gave. Um I think it's uh dismembered to say police force nowadays is public safety and that's truly with the the life savings. So I will let go with my apologies as said and say thank you again. Uh my last note was uh April fourth, this past Saturday. Uh there was a peaceful demonstration in Port Orchard uh with over seventeen hundred people attending. And I'd like to commend everyone regardless of their beliefs on every side of making the peaceful demonstration. I think that speaks well for citizens at Port Orchard and I hope that it continues to that way. So thank you for everyone.
Okay, the last thing I wanted to just advise is that Tacoma Community College dropped their appeal of both schemes, lives and church for the red act in some other people's. I think that was no small part to the public life that's I got behind it. Give more from health despair cities and other providers, Francisco Healthcare and so on. So I think uh Tacoma Community College saw that there were so many people lying up against them that had been heavily involved. Plus, maybe a new team might have been involved in that decision. But in any case, it's been dropped. And so that program is moving forward and uh they will be expanding their possible campus to assist with education. Which is growing on healthcare professionals. So with that, I guess it is time to, there's no discussion, so I'll adjourn here.
You can use the.
I can use the. Eric. Well, I love you.
Yeah, maybe we can learn from this.